Five thirty-four. Zooming to the floor, please.
Councilmember Yanfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salasvito.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeHorn.
I am here. Now, I want you to approve the agenda for the city as a whole.
I make the approval of the agenda.
Support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Yanfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeHorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasvito.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
So, it's in discussion time. I'm here to... Somebody? Uh, MERS Actuarial Presentation, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Steve Council. We've been... Back in July, we received our annual valuation from MERS, our actuarial valuation. I've asked Michael Overly, who's our regional representative for MERS, to come talk to you about it. Um, we're... There's some changes to MERS that are coming down the pike, and it's probably easier for him to explain than for me to explain to you. So, I've asked Mike to come and do that. Also, she's not here yet, but she's coming from labor negotiations over outside the Flint area. Lizzie Mills. Lizzie Mills is with Fakey Schultz, Burris and Rhodes, if you recall. We used Steve Schultz the last time for labor negotiations, and we still have them engaged for future labor negotiations. And I've asked Lizzie to help us with our upcoming labor negotiations that will begin here, probably this winter, for the 2020 contracts, both the police and the public works agreements that are up. So, I wanted to... She should be here any minute, but I wanted to turn the floor over to Michael Overly so he can go through it with you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Is this good?
Yeah.
All right. So, I'll put it... So, thank you for that introduction, Mike. I appreciate it, or Council. I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. Everybody should have a copy of this. When Mike and I spoke ahead of time, he mentioned that he shared the full actuarial report with you. I just didn't want to do that to you and go through everything. You'd be here for a while. So, what I did here was sort of condense it down to some of the main points. I do have copies of the full actuarial report. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have about that. But I just wanted to sort of condense it down. Again, Mike has... As Mike has shared, this was sort of Phase One on a multi-phase approach. We wanted to share some information with you as far as what the plan is that you have today, how it works, where it's heading, and then potentially implement some changes, and then I'll be back with you to share more information. So, I wanted to jump right in. Page two. I know you're familiar with MERS. I just wanted to point out that MERS is a public sector. To you, we are governed by an eight-member board, and the members of our board are representatives of municipalities across the state of Michigan. So, some of the things that we're... We'll be talking about here in just a couple of moments. They're difficult decisions, I'll say, and the men and women who are making those decisions, it affects their... as well. So, just wanted to mention that. So, to start off, I sort of wanted to give Council just a feel for what is the plan that you have? How does it work? What does it give to a participant as the plan exists today? Uh, so on page three, currently, the city offers what's called a defined benefit plan or a traditional pension plan. The benefit that an individual receives from the city that's employed currently or would come to work right now is based on a three-part formula, and that three-part formula is shown in that red box near the top of the page. So, there's three component pieces. There's a final average compensation component, a service credit component, and a benefit multiplier. And then, literally, we multiply the three components together to come up with what the benefit is for that individual. So, I have the specific provisions that the city offers right now, and this, again, is separate from Light and Power. This is the city employees. So, vesting is achieved first and foremost after ten years of service for the city... With the city, excuse me. Final average compensation, jumping up a little bit, represents the salary amount that we're going to base an individual employee's pension on. So, for city employees, we take a look at the highest consecutive thirty-six months of wages, wherever that falls for an employee throughout the course of their career. We take that number, turn it into an annual amount, and we say, "That is the number that we're going to base your pension on." So, the highest thirty-six, wherever it falls. Then, for every month that an individual works for the city, and in that month, he or she has to work at least one hundred hours, they earn what is called service credit. So, every month, the city reports to us one of the wages that employee had in that month, and did or did that person not earn the service credit. So, part two is service credit, and part three is what's called a benefit multiplier. The city offers a 2.5% benefit multiplier. It's noted here. The benefit multiplier... Yes, sir.
When you say the city offers a 2.5%, is that something that we have chosen?
Yes.
Yes. And what is the range that other municipalities are offering?
The range, generally speaking, the vast majority are going to fall from 1.5 to 2.5. So, you're on the high end. There are some exceptions that go higher than where you're at, so the low threes, all the way down as low as 1%. So, it does span generally 1 to 3. Those are more rare sort of collective bargaining situations if you're on the higher or lower end of the spectrum. But from the standard offering, you're on the higher side.
Yeah. I think the highest I've ever seen is like a 3.2, 3.3, somewhere around there.
3.2.
And then, yeah, right, the lowest I've seen is 1.
Yeah.
But that's usually a hybrid-type situation.
Correct. Correct. So, the multiplier, regardless of what percentage they have, the multiplier represents what percentage of that average salary you will earn for every year that you work for the city. So, that's what the best... So, the higher the multiplier, obviously, the benefit... The better it is. And I'll give you a example of how this all comes together. The other piece I wanted to mention is there's what we call an early retirement rider in the plan. That's noted here near the bottom of the page. If an individual is age fifty-five and he or she has twenty-five years of service, that individual can retire from the city. If they don't meet both of those criteria, then they just have to be vested, so ten years of service, and they have to be age sixty. So, it's sixty invested or fifty-five to twenty-five years of service. And we'll get into how the plan is funded, but I wanted to point out that employees currently contribute 7% of their pay. Obviously, that's variable, you know, based on what their wages are, but 7% is the uniform percentage amount that all employees contribute based on. So, to give you a feel for what that looks like, I just tried to pick some easy numbers for math's sake. Moving over to page four, let's say that an individual worked and, near the end of his or her time with the city, their average salary ended up being about $50,000. And say that individual worked twenty-five years, right on the button, just twenty-five years, no months. And then, as we previously just discussed, they have a 2.5% benefit multiplier. As I mentioned, we literally multiply those component pieces together. Doing the math brings us out to about $31,250. So, that number represents the annual pension amount that that individual would be entitled to. And again, the traditional defined benefit plan promises this individual this benefit at this level in this example for the rest of his or her life. Now, this is paid on a monthly basis, so I divided by twelve to come up with the $2,604 that you see there. In a husband-and-wife-type situation, there are options. If that was me, I could say, "You know what? I'd like to take a little bit less because I would like to give a benefit to my wife should I pass sooner than her." So, and in a circumstance of someone goes to apply for retirement, we provide the individual with all these different payment options, the husband-and-wife situation. They make the decision about what's financially best for them. They make that decision. So, in this example, the max that an employee would get or retiree would get would be $2,604. If he chose to take a benefit for their spouse, they might receive a little bit less. Key piece, though, lifetime benefit. Yes, sir.
So, the various options that you offer, the city's cost or the MERS cost wouldn't exceed the $31,250? Just different ways of getting to that number?
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Yeah. It's a function of the ages between the two individuals. So, for the participants in, you know, the retired... Someday retiree, it's very straightforward. It's that three-part formula. The longer you work, the better you pay, the better the benefit becomes. That's the easiest way to say it. The catch with a plan like this, and this is kind of unique to MERS, it's unique to, you know, defined benefit plans, is you're promising a lifetime benefit, frankly, without benefit of a crystal ball. So, you do not know... How long is that individual going to live? What are their wages going to be like when they go to retire? You know, what's going to happen with them, with the world? You don't know. So, we've got to get money in to get money out, and then we have to assume a whole bunch of things are going to happen in order to actually be able to put the pencil to the paper and come up with a calculation for it. So, moving over to page five. In the state of Michigan, the state requires that pension plans are prefunded. So, what does that mean? A pension plan represents a liability to the city. It's a promise. To pay for that promise, there's a requirement to put assets in the plan, and you need to pre-fund it or put money in ahead of time. You can't just pay for it as you go. So, you have retirees and just pay for it. The design is to be proactive, put money in ahead of time, so the money is there when an individual rides off into the sunset and makes that claim on their pension. So, as I mentioned earlier, employees are currently putting in 7%. The city pays the balance of that, of that cost. The snapshot, the table five, excuse me, at the bottom of page five, represents a sort of a high-level overview of what the city as a whole, combined with Light and Power... So, I have to clarify that. That's both entities. Have put in each year for the last eleven years, so you can see total employer contribution, what employees have put in under the employee contribution column, and then, under the additional column, the third one from the left, you can see additional contributions, again, combined between the two entities. I apologize. It's just that it's the structure that we have set up here that both entities are under the city's umbrella. Also, as important, you can see the investment income. That's in the middle columns. You can see what investments have brought to the table for this plan every year. You can also see benefit payments. Benefit payments represents the money going out to retirees, again, combined among both entities. And you can see the end-of-the-year asset balance of about $9.8 million. That was as of December 31st, 2018. So, I just wanted to give you a feel for sort of the kind of numbers that we're looking at here. To get into a little bit more specifics.
Based on these figures and based on what's being paid out, what's going in, the life expectancy is to aspire to the city, what? Fifteen years?
Well, so, there's a... If you did the straight math up on this...
Looking at what I see, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Yep. If there were notes... So, there's an expectation that the assets in there will grow at a pretty solid level. There's also the expectation that assets will continue to go in there.
Right.
And then, and this is where the part where it gets tricky. So, you've got retirees who are in the plan right now drawing out of the plan. You could have younger retirees. You could have older retirees. You could have everyone everywhere in between. Then, you've got your active employees who hope to be someday, you know, retirees and drawing out of the plan. So, everybody is not drawing it fully down all at once. But if that scenario were to happen, if we were all the same age, we all retired at exactly the same time, and we knew exactly how long we were going to live, that would be absolutely 100% correct. You know, we would say, "Yeah, we're not going to draw anymore after this timeframe. This is how much assets we have." So, it's... Right now, the defined benefit plan is very much perpetual limit. And that's one of the assumptions that's built into the plan. You have an employee from the city. He or she gives her time to the city. They retire. A new person comes in, and we're generally expecting a stable level of employment. So, there's not this huge influx of retirees all at once where everybody's making a claim on it. I don't know if that helps completely, but it's a fair question based on the assets that you have. I understand. Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. Looking at this, employee contributions have dropped from eleven years ago, $107,000, down to $88,000. Why are those decreasing?
So, that's partially a function of the number of individuals covered on their plan. So, we have a lot, but we have less employees today covered in the plan.
In that same period, our benefit payments have almost tripled from three and a quarter to $900,000-plus.
Yes.
Is that just that many more retirees?
That many more retirees. And again, this is both entities combined together, and it's the natural progression of a plan. So, when a plan starts out, ideally, it's set up, everybody's working, nobody's retired. You know, you're putting money in, we're promised to pay in the future. But at some point, you know, folks are going to make good on that claim. They are going to start retiring. And then, again, the expectation is that you have this generally stable level of both retirees and active employees, where it can become a challenge to plan. Think Social Security, think some of the other, you know, defined benefit plans out there that they may have read about in the paper, what have you, is they get many, many retirees, so now you've got a lot of people drawing. You don't have nearly as many active people supporting the plan. And that's just one factor that can push plan costs up, and sometimes it can be rather significant when that happens.
One question. We, as a council, have been talking for a couple of years about getting away from defined benefit. It's just nobody offers that anymore. We've kind of made a statement recently that we will no longer support any contracts that have defined benefits. We have to get away from this because it's going to take us down. The numbers are here in front of us. But what happens when we move to defined contributions? Does that same money go into the same pot to help with this, or now do we start a whole 'nother fund that leaves this fund in big trouble?
So, it's the latter option there. So, it's a separate fund. It's a defined contribution account, which is separate from this defined benefit account. When you go down that path, part of MERS' role in this whole process is to analyze the plan and show you what that looks like. So, that's a critical decision to the whole, whole piece. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It's a critical piece. You've got two plans then running side by side. You have this plan, and we'll talk funding levels in a moment. This plan that has a liability associated with it, it has promises that have been made by the city in it. Over time, that plan will diminish in terms of the number of active employees. You'll then, at some point, have all retirees, and then, you know, someday, you won't have anybody in that plan. At the other side of the ledger, you'll have the defined contribution plan, which will be the new plan that will come up as new city employees come in. Regardless of whether... I don't want to go too off the subject here, but regardless of whether the city elects to leave the plan exactly as it is today, and by that, I mean open, so accepting new hires in, or it decides to change to a defined contribution plan, which is a completely different retirement plan type, either way, if there are liabilities, unfunded liabilities, I should say, associated with the plan, they do have to get paid off, and they do have to get paid off over what's considered a reasonable timeframe. The reasonable timeframe is, generally speaking, about twenty years. MERS would detail that out for the city when we do the analysis so that you'd have that whole piece. So, that would be the next step after the council meeting here to give you that type of information so they have that in their office.
Yeah. We haven't really gotten to discuss that. They're going to come back November, December with some options. Like we've talked about in the past, the thing is, if you close the plan today and you keep the current employees in the system at a 2.5 multiplier, our costs are going to astronomically skyrocket because you're going to have to pay for the DC and the unfunded liability for the EU. That's kind of... That's one of the reasons why we've not gotten that point, to that, to this point. That being said, we're going to have to... We're going to have to look at some other options for the current employees. Not necessarily want to, you know, not necessarily want to... Everything everyone's earned up to this point, they get. Once you go forward, there could be... It could be, you know, it could... You have different options to keep people in a pension. Maybe it's a lower benefit going forward, or, you know, you can outright freeze it. There's a... Though that option is available. Those would also reduce... Those would not be as costly to the city, and also, over time, would reduce the liability. So, those are things that we're looking at right now.
Right. We're not talking about taking anything away from current employees.
No. Anything you've earned, you get.
Right. And going forward with new hires. But Light and Power did this five years ago?
Yeah. In 2012, the Light and Power Board adopted a hybrid plan, a combination of a DC and DB plan, and that's why you see the employee contributions dropping because that DB plan is fully funded by the Light and Power Board, the hybrid DB plan, and so all new hires don't show up in that. But it limits our exposure compared to a DB plan if the assumptions that MERS makes don't come true.
And it's my convention with what Steve did over at Light and Power. It's a... It has a defined benefit component, but it's at a much lower level, I guess, I would say, than what is currently offered by the state today. Thank you.
I noticed in the investment income area, they fluctuate by $50,000, $60,000. Last year to this year, it was a $200,000 drop. Is that because of bad investing by somebody that works somewhere? And that's why?
No. That's a good... I won't say that. I won't say it's bad investing, but it is variable. So, what you're seeing on here is what's called an actuarial rate of return. And by an actuarial rate of return, what I mean is it's sort of an average rate of return over a period of time. So, for folks that were in the investment market last year, you know, paying attention to the markets, you know, last year, December 2018 was rough. I was about to say it was rough. MERS was on a positive trend with growth. Wasn't fantastic, but it was growing. Late December hit, market went down. MERS ended the 2018 calendar year specifically. Net of all fees, down about 4%. So, in that year, we lost money. There's no other way to say it. You'll note on this chart, table, on the bottom of page five, there's positive investment income. So, when calculated on an actuarial basis, which is looking sort of at returns over a rolling five-year period of time, so on average, the return was still positive. It was still to the positive side of the ledger. The theory behind doing that is if we base returns on just the returns of one year, we'd say, "Well, this is our target. We lost money. We missed our target by quite a bit. Our estimates were off. City, you owe us a whole bunch of money because we missed our target." That's still the case to some degree, but when you average the returns over time, you mute both the highs and the lows and try to bring things together to make it more manageable from a budget standpoint. It works on the other side of the equation, too. Two years prior, we were well north of 8%. You know, since 2008, we've had a 17%, 18%, 13%. In those years, if we just charged you based on what we made in that last year, we'd say, "Hey, we made a lot more money than we thought. You don't need to pay us nearly as much." Mike would probably blow on that call, I'm sure, and I'd like to make that call, to be honest. But looking at smoothing returns or averaging returns over time makes that much more manageable. So, long-winded answer to that's why you're seeing a positive rate of return there, but it's a rolling average, and it's a rolling average over a five-year period of time. So, as a old year, the fifth year drops out, the new year drops, you know, fills into the equation. So, you are seeing variances there in terms of the investment rate of return. Does that help?
And then, that transfer of $134,000, that actually brings us up to 9.98, which took us up from the previous year of 96. So...
Correct.
That's how we get to that number, by infusing more money into it to shore it up?
Yeah. There's been more money going into the plan now in combination for both entities, but the city has been making additional contributions, which it is not required to do, but it has been doing that as the budget allows.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. So, moving over to page six. Mike, is it 6:30? Is our...
Yeah. 6:30.
Okay. All right. I know I'll be good. I just... I want to be respectful of everyone's time. So, page six here. So, the goal with a pension plan is to have a plan, what we call fully funded or 100% funded. I mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, the pension plan, you have somebody that comes to work for the city. They've worked ten years. The city makes this promise to the employee. The promise is a liability. I like the scale sort of graphic here. The scale, you know, on one side of the equation, you have the liability, you have the promise. That's the lifetime benefit estimate. On the other hand, you have the assets that are set aside to pay that benefit. In a perfect world, every single pension plan, Social Security, any type of plan like this would be fully funded, which means that for every dollar that's promised in the plan, whether it's to a current retiree or a future retiree, there's a dollar on hand to pay that person. So, not a penny more, not a penny less. That's where you want the plan to be. That's where MERS puts in policies to ensure that that happens over a period of time. Now, here's the harder information for me to share with Council, but it's very relevant to why we're having this discussion. At the bottom of page six, this is specific to the overall funded level of the plan, the ratio of the liabilities of the promise to the assets. There's a lot of reasons why you see a funding level decline from where we were back in 2008 to where we are today. But looking at just today, at a 63% funding level, this is for the city. Looking at the 63% funding level, another way of looking at that is saying, for every dollar that's promised, either to an existing retiree or a future retiree, as of December 31st, 2018, there are 63 cents on hand to pay for that person. Now, there's not a need to be fully funded right now, although I would love for the city to be fully funded right now. You've got active employees in the plan. You have some folks that are closer to retirement. You have some folks that are further away from retirement. They're going to get there someday. At least, that's what we're assuming. And they're going to make a claim on that retirement plan. So, at some point in the future, we need to ensure that the promised benefit can be met by an equivalent level of assets. And so, if we're trying to quantify things, the $10.2 million that you see there in the bottom of the... The bottom line on table eight-to-ten, that represents the total calculated liability of the plan. So, expected payments to current retirees, as well as the value of the benefit that's been earned by city employees through December 31st, 2018. The liability goes up every year because folks are working in the plan, their pay is going up, they're getting more service credit in the plan. The offset to that is the assets that you see in the column just to the right. The ratio of the two is the funding level. So, using that information to go into what the actuaries do, if you can move over with me on page seven. So, this is... You've probably, you know, put it together already. This is a... It's a complex calculation. So, when our actuaries are trying to figure out how much money they're putting into the plan, they're looking at a lot of different things. One, they're looking at how much money's in the plan already. They're looking at who are the men and women in the plan? What is the unique demographic makeup of the individuals that are in that plan? What are the plan provisions that this plan has? The multiplier, the vesting, the early retirement rider, the options that we talked about in the beginning. And then, they say, "Okay, for this group of men and women that has this benefit plan, these benefit plan provisions, that's funded at this level right now, if we assume a whole bunch of things about them, how long they're going to live, what pay increases will be like, what the investment market's going to return, what's inflation like? What's the probability that when an individual turns age 60, he or she's going to walk out the door of City Hall right away?" Some people will, some people won't. So, we make a whole series of assumptions about our best estimate about what we think is going to happen to that... To those men and women. Are they right? No, they're not, being frank. And hoping there's no actuaries in the room. I'm not an actuary, but it's the best estimate that they can come up with in order to say, "If this group of people that has these plan provisions, if all these things happen, then this is how much money we need in the plan to fulfill the lifetime benefit promise the city has made to that person." So, putting it in real numbers, if you move to the bottom of page seven, for the Michigan fans out there, I coded yellow and blue. I didn't know any... Yellow and blue. Usually, it's green and white. The yellow line represents... The yellow highlighted, the numbers are smaller, I apologize, represents the total contribution by division. So, you can see the city's classification is the Division 10-General. And you can also see the Light and Power contributions there as well. So, those are the contribution requirements estimated there that went into effect July 1 of 2019, so just a couple of months ago. The blue, moving over to the left, shows contributions that will go into effect, estimated, July 1, 2020. So, it gives you a feel for where we are today and where we're going. And that's just short-term, real numbers to give Council a feel for where things are at.
And that's to stay at 63%?
That's a... That's to pay for the current year's plan, pay for employees for one more year of service, and, and this is an important piece, and pay off a portion of the unfunded liability that exists. So, we're at the 63% that you saw on page six. Over 20-year timeframe, we've got to get you up to that hallowed triple-digit number. So, there's a portion that gets tossed into that. So, there's a portion that gets tossed into that plan each year, so it's a combination of both. The full-fledged actuarial report that Mike had shared with you previously has that breakdown. I didn't bring that full breakdown, but that is in that actuarial report. This is just the summary numbers, if you will.
Just so you're aware, this year was the first year, starting July one this year, that we didn't phase in. We started in sixteen was when the phase ins first started, fifteen or sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and I know there were five years that we had before we could, that we could phase in over time. I believe this was the year four of that, and there is no, we did not phase in this year, and I don't intend to phase in next year. So, we're paying on a higher percentage going forward, I just, in order to start paying this down the best we can, I think we have, you know, I think we have to do that. So, that's what I budgeted for this year, and we've been paying on that, so.
And just a side note, so what Mike is referring to with this, with phase in, so you see a phase in number and a no phase in. So, and that really leads into what I want to talk about, maybe on page eight, but on a recurring, regular basis, our board, our senior management, and our actuaries take a look at all of the assumptions and methodologies that are used in calculating a plan like this, you know. So, the bottom line, figuring out how much money we can put in the plan, how do we do that? What are the assumptions that we make? Four years ago, the process of looking at those things is called an experience study. Four years ago, we went through this experience study, we looked at the assumptions, we look at the data, and if the data is showing something other than where the assumption is at, then a recommendation is made by the actuaries to the MERS board to say, we need to change the assumption. It's a responsibility, frankly, that our board has, you know, think of life expectancy. You know, you could say, geez, everyone's going to pass away at sixty-two. I mean, you could assume that, but that's egregious, and it's not going to happen. Conversely, you could say everyone's going to go to one hundred and five, that's not going to happen either. So, you have to make the changes as the data, you know, as the data supports it. All that being said, we made some changes a couple, four years ago, and the net impact of those changes was to push planned costs up. How much up the planned cost went was unique to each individual local government entity. But in order to provide at least some budget flexibility, we wanted to break the contribution increase up so that you could fit it in the budget if you needed to fit it in the budget if the cost increase was too much. So, what we did is say, plan costs went up, we'll give you two options. One is to spread that cost increase that came about from us making those assumption changes, spread that out over a five-year period of time, or technically, we call that phasing it in over a five-year period of time, think of it sort of like a car home. The other option was to just say, don't phase it in, just deal with it head-on and go right at it. So, every year, when we would give the city this full actuarial report, you'd get two sets of numbers. And then again, just to back up what Mike said, for the first couple of years, the city had opted into the phase-ins, so the sort of incremental, five-year approach. A year ago, changed that and went up to the, what we call, full impact or the no-phase-in approach. So, that was why I highlighted the numbers that I did, because that's the path that the city is on right now. So, I, long-winded answer, I just wanted to give you that back, that's where those numbers come from. So, that sets us up pretty well for the information on page eight. Mike alluded to this in his opening remarks. I had mentioned that MERS takes a look at its assumptions, its methodologies on a regular basis. We're in the middle of another one of these experience studies and looking at all of these different items. Generally speaking, the assumptions that we're looking at fall into two different categories. There's economic assumptions, and there's demographic assumptions. So, economic, think pay increases, inflation, investment rate of return. Demographic is life expectancy, mortality rates, incidences of disability, incidences of early retirement, things like that. So, people and money is sort of the two categories to look at. So, we're looking at these things, and again, from an investment market standpoint, the market has been challenging, technical, investment term, but it's been interesting, it's been challenging. And because of that, our board has moved up its review of the economic assumptions. So, we're looking at things like investment rate of return and pay increases like that on a sooner basis than we normally would. So, our board, at the end of last year, reviewed all of these assumptions, and they made decisions on some changes to those economic assumptions early here in twenty nineteen. And then we tried to quantify those changes, report them to all of our customers in the annual valuation report that you got this summer, and then I copied a few highlights here that I'll show you. So, so moving to the middle page here, again, economic assumptions, just to make sure I hit these things, they're sort of forward-looking, they're looking at what we expect, generally speaking, the investment market to do for us in the short and midterm time horizon. It's a challenge. Historically, MERS has been very strong from an investment market standpoint. Since two thousand, the market's had a lot more volatility than it ever did when MERS was created back in nineteen forty-six, so I'm probably familiar with a lot of the market volatility. And because of the outlook, at least in the short term, there's concern by our board of an ability to hit a higher rate of return without taking an inordinately high amount of risk. So, we're lowering down what we expect investments to bring to the table. And investments play a critical role in providing this benefit to city employees. And if we look back on that table five, you can see again that the annual investment income that comes into the whole city's plan. So, investment return is one big piece, and then on the other side, we're also looking at wage inflation, so that's sort of your payroll growth over time. So, we're lowering investment return assumption, and we're lowering wage inflation. Wage inflation, again, is looking payroll growth, not just pay increases on a year-to-year basis. But if you hired me and I came in, and maybe I got pay reasons for a couple of years, but then I had a job promotion and my pay went up maybe a little bit more, we're trying to forecast that wage growth for that person over a lifetime, but looking at it on an annual basis. So, to summarize all of these things here, we have two major changes that are going into effect right now, or very soon, at least that we can give you a quantification of what their impact is. On page nine is the summary of the changes. Investment return, the bottom line, that's going down, so thinking net impact there. Money in the pension plan comes from the retiree, the employee, from the city, and from the investment rate of return. If a little bit less money is expected to come from investments, then a little bit more money either comes from the city or it comes from the employee. That's just the only way you can really slice the equation. Wages, if we're expecting a little bit lower wage growth than we historically had, that has the opposite effect, so lower wages, lower pension, lower costs. They're not one-to-one, so lowering the investment rate of return is much more impactful than lowering the wage assumption. But they are, at least to some degree, offsetting to some degree, but it's not one-to-one. To quantify this, because this is, I think, what probably really matters the most, on page nine here at the bottom, the graph, there's a lot of data here. But to give you a feel for what this means, if you look at the right-hand column, it says valuation assumptions, investment return is seven-seven-five, wage increase three-seven-five, and you see a whole bunch of different rows with different numbers. Bottom line is the sixty-three percent funded level that we talked about, and then the total contribution listed there. That's using the assumptions that we have in effect right now. At the end of calendar year twenty nineteen, we're moving to this more conservative assumption set that we just talked about, that you see detailed out here in this middle column of this box. Going to this lower assumption set, if we applied it right now to the data as of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, you can see the impact that that would have on the funding level and on the contributions of the plan. So, bottom line is the easy, it illustrates that it pushes the plan costs up. So, taking that and then moving over to the next page, just checking my time here, that's sort of a snapshot moment in time. If you look at the top of page ten then, we're using the same philosophy and rolling that, those assumption changes out over a six-year period of time to give you a better feel of what does that impact look like when you start compounding things, you know, a couple, three, four, five, six years out. So, the top section is the current assumptions as the plan is calculated today. The second section down there, seven-three-five slash three percent, represents the new, more conservative assumption set. So, to clarify on this, the only number that is real today exactly is that very top line where it says twenty eighteen valuation year, fiscal year beginning July one of twenty twenty, sixty-three percent funded, and five-eighty-nine, five-sixty. Again, this is a collective number between the city and Light and Power. That number is set, that has been calculated. Everything else going forward is shown for informational purposes only. These impacts don't go into effect until your twenty-twenty-one calendar year. So, you've got some time. The purpose that the MERS board had in putting this information in now was frankly to have conversations like this. So, A, to raise awareness, as difficult as that is, to be honest. B, allow you time to formulate approach, if an approach is needed in that case, so that if there's a need to change things, there's some time, and it's not a, you know, surprise this goes into effect for you tomorrow. To take the ten-thousand view, you know, ten-thousand-foot view, the graph at the bottom of page ten represents these same scenarios, but looking out over a twenty-five-year period of time. So, the solid blue line that you see represents the current assumption set and the current expectation of contributions for the city over this timeframe. The dashed red line represents the change to the new assumptions. So, they're very similar, they track closely, but yet they're not the same. You see a sort of a cliff, you see out there about twenty forty, there's just a drop-off all of a sudden. And to the conversation that we were having earlier about, you know, we're sixty-three percent funded, and I mentioned we've got to get to this fully funded position, that year represents when the plan is anticipated, and all things being as we expect them to be. That is the year that the plan becomes fully funded, and there is no legacy debt that needs to be paid off. Then the contributions drop dramatically, then at that point, you're just paying for the year-to-year costs of the plan. And this caveat is leaving the plan exactly as it is today. So, this cost curve can change with potential actions, depending on what those actions would be. So, this is just as of December thirty-first, where was the plan?
Just so you know, in twenty-twenty-one, if we look at these, when we get below sixty percent, we do have to file a corrective action plan with the state. We will, with this, if this isn't addressed in labor negotiations, we will be filing a plan. And the state will be paying attention to us on how we're handling this. I mean, there's not much they can do right now to us with the PA two oh two, but they could, down the road, put more barriers into that.
So far, that wasn't enough. Just, again, I wanted to paint a full picture for council so you have a feel here. So, page eleven is just sort of a preview. And I included this because I haven't been able, we haven't been able to quantify this yet because it's actively in process. So, I mentioned that we do this experience study, we look at life expectancies, we look at investment rate of returns, we look at everything associated with the plan. I mentioned that there's these economic assumptions and there's demographic. So, what I can quantify, what you see here on page ten, are changes to the economic assumptions. And we can, we know that those will go into effect, those changes will push plan costs up, and they will go into effect for the city in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. On page eleven, this is just a preview of, I guess, things to come. Impact unknown at this point, but there will, there's currently a review of demographic assumptions, so mortality rates, disabilities, things like that. That study will conclude at the end of this year, same process. If changes need to be made, the actuaries will recommend certain things to our board, and our board will make a decision on whether or not that they implement those. I would say, without any insider information, that all signs point to there will be at least some tweak or change to those demographic assumptions. I just can't quantify it yet, but I want to give you this, at least as a preview, from a full disclosure standpoint, to say that there could at least be some form of other impact, as in cost increase coming as a result of that. Our goal with this will be, once that is completed, we will capture and preview the impact of that in the report that the city will get next summer. So, if I'm standing for you, you know, next year at this time, I'll have many more details than what we have right now. I guess if I sort of summarize it all up, I think as Mike mentioned in the beginning, there's changes coming to the plan, the changes are a result of what MERS board has, what we call, this fiduciary responsibility to the plan, to ensure that there's assets in the plan to meet the liabilities that have been calculated, to meet the promises that have been made. You know, given what the data has shown, given what the market outlook looks like, we're moving to a more conservative assumption set. Not that it changes anything, it's not really unique to MERS, it's something that's happening all across the United States. The state of Michigan is doing the same type of thing as well. Mike mentioned oversight from the state of Michigan that applies to all local government entities. In those circumstances, the state is using even more conservative assumptions than what MERS is using. So, there's definitely, I'd say it's more than just the winds of change that are blowing in that direction, it's more of a headwind that's blowing in that direction. So, it's of critical importance, I think, for, again, having these discussions, seeing where you're heading, and ideally formulating a plan, you know, to address those so that when you look at those contribution trends at the bottom of page ten, we don't get there. We don't get to that point, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years out. The last thing anybody wants is for someone to be, you know, a point of no return. And I guess in sort of summary, the information on page twelve is just a high level of trends or strategies or options that can be employed in either singular or in combination to address these type of liabilities. Stephen mentioned earlier with Light and Power, you know, about six, seven years ago, they made a change to what's shown in the middle blue, a hybrid plan for new hires, changing the plan type from what was offered at this level, and now it's at this level. So, there are short-term solutions, there are long-term solutions. Some options affect new hires, some options affect existing employees. But at the end of the day, when we're dealing with an issue like this, there's sort of two ways to hit it. It's either from a money standpoint of what we call a funding strategy or from a plan design strategy, so changing what we offer and trying to bend the liability curve down so that the chosen solution fits within the budget. So, the next step would be to formulate either one or a combination of these strategies to bring them together. MERS would do calculations to illustrate the impact on that, both on a short-term basis and a long-term basis, so then the council would have a feel for the path forward on a moving forward basis.
When you guys changed over, Greg and Steve, was there any look at which version of a plan would be a better recruitment tool? Like, if you're looking for new employees, they're going to look at retirement as a, you know what I mean?
What you're finding nowadays is, one, the new worker, they're not